Would be for Maude's son to use it, to live there while he studies his bachelor and his advanced degree. Maude is a, her birthplace is the Netherlands and so she from time to time has family coming and visit, to the extent that the travel restrictions are lifted, they might want to stay there as well. And additionally, in the event that her son moves out, Maude has indicated that she likely would be looking to rent the apartment while she continues to live at the primary dwelling. And she's talked about being very careful and selective as to who she would allow in to have an adult. The Board of Health, the septic system is designed for three bedrooms. That system will not be expanded. In order to meet the Board of Health requirements, one of the bedrooms in the primary dwelling would have to be converted to an office, such that the net increase in bedrooms is zero. In order to properly convert it into considerate an office, Ma will have to remove the door and have to file a deed restriction, which he's, all of which he's planning on doing. She's increasing the length of the driveway and the total impervious coverage on the property, but not in a manner that triggers the jurisdiction for stormwater permit. Karen has already confirmed that. The extension of the driveway will allow for two more parking spaces. As far as code compliance, there presently is water and electricity out to the building, all of which were installed recently per the code. The ZBA recently voted to allow a change in gross floor area of living space. And they voted that the change would not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. That was necessary because the lot size is less than 40,000 square feet required in the zone. I actually disagree, I didn't think it was necessary at all, but in my opinion, is it relevant? That zoning decision hasn't been filed with the town clerk yet, to the extent that the Planning Board would entertain voting a motion tonight, that would be our, or a motion to close tonight, that would be our preference. As far as the size of the structures are concerned, and the 750 square feet, 40% primary dwelling issue, the 912 gross floor area times 40%, my calculation, and I've been wrong with calculations to the board in the past, is 364 square feet. Since that number is lower than 750 square feet, then the accessory dwelling can be permissible up to 750 square feet. And she's not proposing to max that out, she's proposing to keep it at its existing dimension and that is a modest 520 square feet. So, we believe we meet the purpose and the design criteria of the bylaw for accessory dwellings and we ask the Board if you can.
Karen?
So, everything Attorney DeLisi said is correct. We, this meets the bylaw, it's under, under 750 square feet. This was legally converted from a barn to a garage, all legally done, and now she just wants a real conversion to an accessory dwelling. She has signed a statement that she will live on the property. I have done the calculations and it's, it's, she's not going to trade over the stormwater bylaw either. I think this is what your accessory dwelling bylaw really encourages, it will be conditioned that has to meet all Board of Health requirements. But the Board of Health is aware of this, they are working to come, you know, when the deed restriction has to happen, all that will go in place, and that's all prior to occupancy, but it's conditioned that she has to meet all Board of Health requirements.
When do we think the ruling from CBA will be available?
I asked, we've asked twice today, and it's, it's, it's in circulation back to all the board members. So, it could be tomorrow, it could be a week, it could be a week, it could be two weeks. I don't know. The ZBA has been, they have 90 days and wish to issue a decision, they don't, they have not, they don't want to take them the 90 days to issue simple decisions, is what I'm saying.
In my experience, when a decision like that is circulated to the Board, it's a matter, it's a matter of days.
I'd like to have a ZBA decision prior to doing this, but I would say, given where we are in this, in this day and age, we may not have any more public hearings for a hearing.
That is why we aren't worried about public hearings.
So, I think it would be conditioned on the ZBA.
It is part of the condition.
Well, we can add a condition in here again.
It's in there, isn't it?
You want to add in, but all your standard conditions are added here, and this doesn't have to be released until the ZBA just files with the town clerk. I mean, ideally that that would be filed the same day, and then the appeal period is both run at the same time. I mean, that, however you want to handle that.
Okay. I think that under the circumstances, the accessory apartment special permit will not be released until the ZBA special permit has been filed.
That's, that's fine.
That's fine.
All right?
But we wouldn't have to come back again.
No.
Great.
Bill?
It's inconsistent with what we've done in the past, but I'm.
I know that, I'm well aware of that.
I'm willing to go with it.
I'm willing to go with it.
Thank you all. Well, I think, given the circumstances, I would say, okay, I don't want this to be a precedent, though.
No, it isn't, but I think.
I do have other questions.
Go for it.
Yeah. So, just, just, I'm trying to make sure I understand your pictures versus your drawing. Your picture has a barn that looks different than a garage?
This has been rebuilt.
So, the blue structure.
Oh, this is something different, this is something that's no longer there?
Was, is the structure.
That's fine, I just wanted to make sure I understood. So, the existing barn is really the existing garage?
Right, it was converted to this next, the next photograph.
Yeah, I'm looking at your drawing.
Do you have pictures if you need to see?
No, no, I'm just looking at the drawing, it says barn, and you said it was a garage, so.
It was only gone in.
Okay. Where do you park and how do you get there?
Right now, there's a driveway that actually pulls into the rear of the existing dwelling and kind of turns into the rear of the dwelling. The concept would be to extend that driveway towards, basically towards the front door and the accessory structure.
Which will be on the long end or on the short end of the?
On the short.
Short end?
The left, the left corner?
No, I just, I just want to get my drawings out here. So, it's this end, it would be in front of this?
Yes.
Okay.
Karen, we have these.
Yeah, right, yeah, that's the current, current pictures.
And.
Here's a large version of the, of the current picture, how the driveway will go there, and that's, you know, any parking will be right back at that.
Okay.
So, it's a, it's a small area where she actually has to fill in the pavement, because there is decrepit ramp, ramp entrance to the garage up here.
Okay.
That's paved.
And then utilities coming in, how does power get out there, is it already out there?
Already out there, we have a trench.
Already out there, okay. And we've got two means of egress, right? Yeah, okay. And the storage shed is something completely different?
Yeah, it's attached to the exterior of the building, it's a separate entrance to the exterior.
Because I don't have a garage anymore, and so it's.
I was going to ask you, where are you going to park?
You have to put lawnmower in there.
I'm sorry?
Have to put the lawnmower somewhere.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Lawnmowers are on lawn anyway, besides myself. I feel like everybody hires someone now.
And the septic system that's on this drawing, does it already exist, or are you building it?
The septic system exists.
It exists.
This is the existing septic system. But it needs to be connected still.
So, that's this four-inch pipe that's coming over to it.
Okay.
And that's all up to the Board of Health.
Okay.
Are there butters on either side of you where the, where the accessory dwelling will be? Like, are you, are you close to houses?
If you're, if you're standing on the road, looking at the structure, the closest a butter is to the left.
Over here.
With the shared driveway.
Yeah, that's, the present driveway is the shared driveway.
Oh, this is a shared driveway?
Yeah.
So, is, are they up here, the house is up here, though, right?
Yeah, next to mine.
And is the other house up here somewhere?
No, no, the other house, well, you mean on the, on the right side?
Yeah, on the right side.
I, I don't know the answer to that question.
It's a little further back.
Okay.
But the accessory dwelling is at the recommended setback.
Okay. I just wanted to know where the butters were. All right, that's all I got.
Bill?
I'm all set.
This is a public hearing, is there anyone from the public here? There we go.
They're all from the public.
Yeah.
I move to make the following findings of fact. One, on December 6, 2019, Ma, Maude.
Thank you.
Millis.
Mulsting.
Mulsting. Applied for special permit for detached accessory dwelling on the property at 755 First Parish Road. Two, according to the town of Situate's access records, the property at 755 First Parish Road is owned by Maude. Three, based on a floor plan submitted by the applicant, the floor area of the proposed accessory dwelling will be approximately, and that was changed to what, 500 and something feet?
520 gross square.
520 gross square feet. This is greater than 50% of the total square footage of the primary dwelling, which is 912 net square feet.
Shouldn't that say greater than, I'm sorry, I, I thought maybe it should say greater than 40%, but maybe I'm wrong.
I used the applicant, I used the information that was filled, that was put in the application. So, she wrote that it's greater than 50%.
If it's greater than 50, I guess it's greater than 40.
It is.
Since 40s are, are benchmark, we can put 40 in there, that'd be fine.
Okay. 40% of the total square footage of the primary dwelling, which is 912 net square feet, according to the assessors card. This meets the size requirements of 530.2F of the zoning bylaw for accessory dwellings as the bylaw allows 750 square feet or 40% of the total square footage of the primary dwelling, whichever is greater. The accessory dwelling is subordinate to the existing single-family home. Four, the accessory dwelling unit will be a complete, separate housekeeping unit, and there will only be one accessory dwelling on the lot. Five, the property is in the residential R1 zoning district, the proposed attached accessory dwelling structure meets all the required setbacks, building height and yard requirements for primary dwelling. The height of the accessory dwelling is approximately 15.5 feet tall. The proposed accessory dwelling is located on the south side rear of the primary dwelling in a detached car garage, which was legally renovated from a barn. Access will be via a door at the front and side of the dwelling. Seven, the appearance of the accessory dwelling will be in keeping with the appearance of the primary dwelling. Eight, the proposed in-law tie-in sanitary system plan in Situate, Mass. for 755 First Parish Road shows an existing paved driveway for the existing dwelling and garage. The applicant will be modifying the existing driveway so that there will be parking for two cars at the house and two gravel parking spaces by the accessory dwelling.
Take out, take out gravel.
Take out gravel?
Yeah.
Two parking spaces by the accessory dwelling. This appears adequate to provide two parking spaces for the primary dwelling and two spaces for the accessory dwelling. Ample parking appears to be provided. Nine, the owner has submitted a signed notarized statement that she will occupy one of the units at 755 First Parish Road. Ten, the accessory dwelling will be serviced by town water and, and on-site septic system. DPW requirements for water connections will be met. Board of Health requirements for the septic system will be met when a bedroom is decommissioned in the primary dwelling and a deed restriction is given for a three-bedroom septic system to the Board of Health. Eleven, the application meets the standards of the Situate zoning bylaw for an accessory dwelling special permit.
So, just, just a couple editorial changes, right, on number six, I think I just should say access will be via doors at the front inside of the dwelling, right?
Uh huh.
And then I would just say, under eight, the last sentence ought to be ample parking is being provided.
Okay.
And then, I think, under 10, the last sentence there, I think restriction is given for a three-bedroom system. Well, maybe that's right. Is it, are we giving a restriction to the Board of Health, or is this something that gets recorded?
The Board of Health is requiring a three.
It gets recorded, the registry.
And they record it, but it's, we don't give it, the Board, it's all done with the Board of Health.
Okay. So, which, which we give into the Board of Health and then they, they automatically record it?
No, they, they require it as a condition for sign-off of the occupancy permit.
Okay. All right.
All right. I'll entertain a second for the findings of fact, as amended.
All in favor?
Aye.
I. I move to approve the special permit for an accessory dwelling at 755 First Parish Road with the following conditions, in addition to the standard conditions for accessory dwellings approved by the Planning Board after a public hearing on 12/17/15. One, except for any changes necessary to meet these conditions, any construction shall substantially conform to proposed in-law tie-ins, sanitary system. Just a minute. Yeah. System, 755 First Parish Road, Situate, Mass., prepared for Maude dated 3/21/2018, with revisions through 2/1919 by Webby Engineering Associates, Inc., modified site plan dated 3/9/20, architectural plans by Betsy Wotton.com, custom home design Orleans, Mass., consisting of three sheets, including, one, proposed renovation for existing garage with front and side, right side elevation, latest revision 4/14/18; two, proposed renovation of existing garage, left side elevation and rear elevation and section, latest revision dated 4/14/18; three, proposed renovation of existing garage first floor plan, latest revision dated 4/14/18, main house 755 First Parish Road floor plan. Two, the number of bedrooms in the accessory dwelling is limited to one in the location and size indicated on the floor plan submitted with the application. Three, no further expansion of the accessory dwelling floor, the floor area is allowed without further review by the Planning Board. Four, upon occupancy of the accessory dwelling, the applicant shall provide a notarized affidavit that she is living in one of the dwelling units. A yearly certification that the owner occupies one of the dwelling units must be provided by March 1 yearly. Five, all requirements of the Board of Health, Building Department, zoning Board of Appeals, Department of Public Works, Fire Department, and other town agencies must be met prior to occupancy of the accessory dwelling. Six, the accessory dwelling shall conform to all applicable standards in the building, plumbing, electrical, mechanical, fire, and health codes and bylaws. Seven, water connection must meet all requirements of the DPW water division for the accessory dwelling. Eight, any lighting installed shall be downlighting to not shed light on abutting properties. Nine, eight, construction work shall not begin prior to 7:00 AM weekdays and 8:00 AM on Saturdays and shall cease no later than 7:00 PM or sunset, whichever is earlier. No construction shall take place on Sundays or legal/federal holidays. Construction includes idling of vehicles, delivery of materials to the site, and all other construction activities. Ten, runoff from the proposed accessory dwelling shall not be increased from the property. Eleven, erosion and sedimentation control devices shall be installed as necessary to prevent any erosion or sedimentation from leaving the site during construction. Silt sock shall be used as necessary. Twelve, the accessory dwelling permit shall not be released until the ZBA special permit has been released.
That's been reported, right?
And.
Did that one happen?
You want, you want, once the Z, you want to say the accessory dwelling special unit will not be filed with the town clerk until the ZBA special permit has been filed with the town clerk, given the current conditions of coronavirus.
Fine.
If you want them to file their, their permit.
What she said.
Absolutely. What she said.
Just a couple of things, just on number one, we kind of, just a little weirdly sort of ran into this, this set of drawings. I would say at the top of the page, it says, "Construction shall substantially conform to the following documents," you know, the whole one, right? And then, then you can go into proposed, whatever.
Following documents.
Yeah.
Anything else, Steve?
I think 10 should probably be reworded a little bit. Runoff from the proposed accessory dwelling shall not increase runoff from the property, right?
Okay. All right, I'll entertain a second as amended, unless there are further.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're all set.
Thank you very much.
Really appreciate that.
Hey. Take good care.
Stay safe out there.
Don't shake any hands.
A quick question, is anybody coming for later on?
I kind of had it in Paul's hands, I assumed he was. Do you believe that you need somebody available?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay. I wasn't planning on being.
But if you said you were going to be here, I would tell, I would ask the Board to do it now, because it's me and this single motion. It's all I was inquiring.
Which motion is this, Karen?
Why don't we just do it while I'm here?
I don't think Paul Harpey was coming, I saw him today.
All right, it's two motions for the endorsement of the definitive plans, that's, it's not a public hearing, so you can take that out of the law sequence, because it's not the required time for the next public hearing.
Okay.
For which definitive plan?
Buckeye Lane.
Oh.
And Stockbridge.
Buckeye Lane and.
1416 Old Country Way.
Right.
Okay. Are we ready?
Uh huh.
I move that the Planning Board endorse the definitive subdivision plan for 14 and 16 Old Country Way in Situate, Mass. for Robert Proctor, manager of 14 to 16 Old Country Way LLC by Ross Engineering Company, Inc., revised dated 2/21/20, as the milars are consistent with the approved plans.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move that the Planning Board endorse the definitive subdivision plan of land Buckeye Lane and Stockbridge Road in Situate, Mass. for First Buckeye Corporation, Richard W. and William E. Hoffman, TRS WSET Brothers Trust, Richard W. and William E. Hoffman, J.T. and Wilson H. and John R. Brown by Ross Engineering, Inc., revised dated 2/21/20, as the milars are consistent with the approved plans.
You said 2 what? Revised what?
As the milars are consistent with.
Then revise what day?
2/21/20.
2/21/20.
Has that happened yet?
Yeah, we're in, yeah, we're in March.
We're in March.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Honey, today, I have to tell you.
I think, I think, I think I might have been exposed.
I think, today is the 12th of March.
Second. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's what the Board knows, I mean.
Thank you for advancing that.
They're consistent, except one other sheet was added, which required your conditions. So, everything, I think, did the light table check, they're all good.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
The next, I have public hearings at 7:45.
At 7:45, 304 Clapp Road, we've got five minutes.
I definitely do the minutes.
Okay, minutes. Okay. You can read that. I move to approve the minute, minute, excuse me, I move to approve the meeting minutes for February 27, 2020. Sir, second?
I want you to sign up.
Correct.
Go.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And we might as well do bills.
I move to approve the requisition of $125 to Chesia Consulting Services LLC for stormwater peer review of 36 Barker Road, for $1,650 to Merrill Corporation for peer review services for 16, 18, and 20 Man Hill Road, for $1,500 to Merrill Corporation for peer review of 443 to 461 Chief Justice Cushing Highway, Common Driveway, and Stormwater.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, sign that later. Okay. Minutes counting, we did that. Layers on reports, anything you want to click, Bill?
Nope. I don't have anything. Nope.
All right, the CPC voted unanimously to withdraw the proposal for a halfway/sidewalk from Huey Road to Green Bush, because it did not meet the criteria under CPC for funding. So, rather than entertain a potential lawsuit, as happened in Norwell, they chose to withdraw it. And, okay, all right, we're almost a quarter off, so if you want to come forward for 304 Clapp Road, please.
So, if you would introduce yourselves and give us your presentation?
Sure, good evening, my name is Jared Giroux, and this is my mother, Deborah Rennie. We recently moved to Situate in 2019, in August, and we moved with my wife, Jen Scapini Giroux, and our two daughters, my wife is with them right now as we speak. And the reason for the move and part of our goal was to build an in-law apartment for my mother, who helps out with the kids every Friday and off and on throughout the week as much as we needed and as much as she can handle with two, a four-year-old and a two-year-old running around.
God bless you.
So, we had intended to build, it's like a 520-square-foot structure above an existing garage that is attached to the house, to have that serve as a single-bedroom residence for my mother, and in that process, convert the room that she is currently living in within the primary dwelling into an office for myself. I do occasionally work from home, and doing so at the dining room table with kids running around is not particularly ideal. around is not particularly ideal. That's pretty much it. We've only been here for about six months, we love it here, we tend to be here for a long time, and I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Okay, Karen?
This is another one, that it's under 750 square feet in size, so it meets your size requirement, is attached to the, there's an existing garage already there, they just intend to go up on the second floor there. They previously had, you know, reconstructed the house, a developer had done that, and so there's still some outstanding conservation stuff that needs to be done, but they're, they're working on that. And so I believe that this, this meets the criteria for an accessory dwelling. Again, they have a four-bedroom septic system, so they have to decommission a bedroom, and they will have a deed restriction with the Board of Health as well, so that they'll adjust four bedrooms for the house.
Okay.
And what were the numbers? You said it's less than the forty, what's the primary dwelling?
Yeah, the primary dwelling-
3,123 square feet.
And how big is the accessory?
519.
Oh, wow, okay.
So it's, it's-
Well within the parameters.
Yep.
It's well within the parameters, and, you know, they really don't have that much, probably don't have really any earthwork to do, it's really just going up to the second story.
And are there two means of egress?
Yes, yes, there are, there's a, there's going to be a deck off of the backside of the-
Yeah, that's this one here, right?
Yes.
Yep, that's correct, and then there's going to be another means of egress within the garage, with stairs coming down, going over there.
Okay.
All right.
Nice looking addition.
What'd you say?
I said it's a nice looking addition.
Definitely blends into the house, that's nice.
There you go.
How is water being handled? Is it separate metered and all that, or is it on the same meter?
We would need to do another hookup for the water.
Okay.
That is expensive.
I've seen the $6,500 on the website.
All right, and your septic system is okay?
Septic system is okay for the four-bedroom, yes, that's correct.
Well, you just moved in and had it, it was certified?
Yes, we haven't had any issues since we've moved in. The house was previously renovated, as mentioned. It took about, I think, three or four years between the time they started the renovations until the time it was completed and sold for us. I believe the septic system, well, I know the septic system was upgraded at that point in time, and we had not had any-
Is that the pretty house that, that's white with a-
Yep.
It's white, yeah.
I've watched that construction go on for quite some time.
You'd be amazed at how many people have, in the area, come by and said that they've been watching it go up.
They did a nice job.
You did a beautiful job, it looks absolutely stunning.
It does.
Really?
Thank you.
Really, and it was a derelict before.
Well, we've seen the pictures on Google Maps of what it looked like before, so it's a, it's a different, different house for sure.
Yes, well, there you go.
And where, where would the parking be?
So there's still two garage spots that would be underneath the accessory, the accessory dwelling at this point, and then the third car would be in the garage, I think, in the driveway.
There's, there's room for two cars in the driveway and two cars in the, in the garage.
Okay. And then, oh, it's still part of the main house, it doesn't really, lighting's not going to be an issue or anything, right?
No.
Okay.
Okay. Rebecca?
I'm good.
All right. Okay, I move to make the following findings a fact. On January 14th, 2020, Jared Giroux and Deborah Rennie applied for a special permit for an attached accessory dwelling on the property at 304 Clap Road. Two, according to the town of Situate's accessories records and the deed, the property at 304 Clap Road is owned by Jared Giroux and Deborah Rennie. Three, based on the floor plan submitted by the applicant, the floor area of the proposed accessory dwelling will be approximately 519 gross square feet. This is 17% of the total square footage of the primary dwelling, which is 3,123 square feet, according to the applicant, who indicated that is what his architect calculated. This meets the size requirements of 530.2F of the zoning bylaw for accessory dwellings as the bylaw allows 750 square feet of 40% of the total square footage of the primary dwelling, whichever is greater. The accessory dwelling is subordinate to the existing single-family home. Four, the accessory dwelling unit will be a complete, separate housekeeping unit, and there will be only one accessory dwelling on the lot. The property, number five, is in the residential R1 and Water Resource Protection zoning districts. The proposed attached accessory dwelling structure meets all the required setbacks, building height and yard requirements for a primary dwelling. Six, the proposed accessory dwelling is proposed to be located on the second floor of the attached garage of the primary dwelling. Access will be via an internal staircase inside the two-car garage. There is a second, secondary access to the rear of the building with exterior stairs. Seven, the appearance of accessory dwelling will be in keeping with the appearance of the primary dwelling. Eight, the plot plan of the land in Situate, Mass. showing 304 Clap Road shows an existing bituminous concrete driveway for the existing dwelling and a two-car garage. This appears adequate to provide two parking spaces for the primary dwelling and two spaces for the accessory dwelling. Ample parking appears to be provided. Nine, the owner has submitted a signed notarized statement that she will occupy one of the units at 304 Clap Road. Ten, the accessory dwelling will be serviced by Town Water and onsite septic system. DPW requirements for water connections will be met, Board of Health requirements for the septic system will be met when a bedroom in the house is decommissioned and a deed restriction is given for a four-bedroom septic system to the Board of Health. Eleven, the applicant meets the standards of the Situate zoning bylaw for an accessory dwelling special permit. Any additions or corrections?
I would just change eight again and take out, since this is supposed to be a finding fact, I would say this is adequate to provide two parking spaces, right? And ample parking has been provided for, or something like that.
All right. Anything else?
Yeah, number nine, just changed she today. The owners.
Okay. He, she, whomever.
The owner.
The owner.
You can just say the owner.
The owner.
Be the occupant you want to do.
All right, I'll have a second as amended?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move to approve the special permit for the accessory dwelling at 304 Clap Road with the following conditions, in addition to the standard conditions for accessory dwellings approved by the Planning Board after public hearing on 12/17/15. One, except for any changes necessary to meet these conditions, any construction shall subsequently conform to Giroux Residence In-Law Above Garage 304 Clap Road, Situate, Mass. O2O66 by Designs by Marshall, LLC dated 1/11/2020, consisting of a cover sheet, demo plans D1, new floor plans A1, exterior elevations A2, certification plan number 304 Clap Road, Situate, Mass. dated 17, July 17th, 2018 by Grady Consulting, LLC. Two, the number of bedrooms in the accessory dwelling is limited to one in the location and size indicated on the floor plan submitted with the application. Three, no further expansion of the accessory dwelling floor, floor area is allowed without further review by the Planning Board. Four, upon occupancy of the accessory dwelling, the applicant shall provide a notarized affidavit that she is living in one of the dwelling units. A yearly certification that the owner occupies one of the dwelling units must be provided by March 1 yearly. Five, all requirements of the Board of Health, Building Department, Zoning Board of Appeals, Department of Public Works, Fire Department and other town agencies must be met prior to occupancy of the accessory dwelling. Six, the accessory dwelling shall conform to all applicable standards in the building, plumbing, electrical, mechanical, fire and health codes and bylaws. Seven, water connection must meet all requirements of the DPW Water Division for the accessory dwelling. Eight, any lighting installed shall be downlighting to not shed light on abutting properties. Nine, construction work shall not begin prior to 7:00 a.m. weekdays and 8:00 a.m. on Saturdays and shall cease no later than 7:00 p.m. or sunset, whichever is earlier. No construction shall take place on Sundays or legal/federal holidays. Construction includes idling of vehicles, delivery of materials to the site and all other construction activities. Ten, runoff from the proposed accessory dwelling shall not be increased from the property. Eleven, erosion and sedimentation control devices shall be installed to prevent any erosion or sedimentation from leaving the site during construction. Silt sock shall be used as necessary. Number four, do we want to change she to something else?
The owner.
The owner.
Number one, I would do the same change we did before, substantially conform to the following documents.
Okay.
And then, I would do the same thing on ten. Runoff from the proposed accessory dwelling shall not increase total runoff from the property.
Is the second, is there a second as amended?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your help.
So we file with this with the town first, then the county, and then the county will carry it after that.
Okay.
We'll let you know when you file, when you get that copy, and then we'll have to do the original copy and file with the town.
Great, thank you very much.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Good luck with the kids.
Make sure she gets a vacation.
She just had one, she doesn't get another one.
Of course she does. All right, we have 15 minutes before discussion, because they're not here. Oh, they are.
The house coming?
Keith, you're staying, I'm supposed to be here, Keith's 4:00 morning, so I call at eight.
It's eight. Well, come on up.
Oh, good, we already did this.
Mm-hmm.
How you doing, Keith Cameron with Toll Brothers?
Hi, Keith.
How you doing?
Nice. Um, here we go. What's this? And there's this. All right, you're here first for reduction in surety?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. All right, Karen, would you like to discuss reduction in surety?
All right, so currently, the board is holding a $4.5 million bond for the completion of the project. They submitted documentation and our consulting engineer reviewed, reviewed the numbers that they provided, they came up with a different number, and they came up with 2.4 million, and, but, after I talked with our consulting engineer, we determined that ongoing dust control, street sweeping, maintenance of the permeable pavement-
Excuse me, Karen, are you with Toll Brothers? Come on in.
Hi, yeah.
Did I need to sign your name today?
You'll just identify yourself and we'll know who you are.
Thank you.
I'm Katie Connery, that's Stanton.
Thank you. All right, Karen, I'm sorry, continue.
In work in the Tilden Road right away, they have offered to put some pavement down in the grass strip in the fall, so that it would be more stable through the winter, and so that all has to be done. None of that is in the figure, so after discussion with Horstley-Witten, I would not recommend that the board release anything less. I mean, you, you need to keep at least 2.8 million, at least 2.8.
Okay. All right, Bill?
Yeah, I guess when I looked at the two numbers, looked at the chart, I was wondering whether the 2.8, 2.4 discussion was actually high enough.
Yeah.
All right.
So the total bond is 8.6 originally, now it's 4.5, because we did, came in for a previous reduction, I don't remember exactly when that was, but the original was 8.6.
And now it's down to 5.?
It's down to 4.5, correct.
All right, we've seen pictures of shingles blowing off roofs.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, and we've heard of, and seen pictures of walls falling down in heavy winds.
There was one, I think on Lower Sand Court, there was one, that was a couple weeks ago.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, that just, that's not good public relations, I have to tell you. It's just, I hope you all understand that you are building in an exceedingly windy area.
Well aware.
Not probably, you are.
Oh, yeah, well aware.
It's, it's, um, yeah, Bill, you were, I'm sorry, I've interrupted you.
Yeah, I was looking at 3 million, I suppose at 2.8.
I would support that, that's exactly the number I was thinking of.
Okay, well, I was thinking of 3.5, but I can live with 3 million. Rebecca?
I can live with 3 million.
Okay. So it's going to be 3 million.
Okay.
You want to read it, Rebecca?
Oh, I'd love to.
Go for it.
I move to accept Toll Brothers' request to reduce the amount of bond being held for the Seaside at Situate Residential Cluster Project by the Planning Board from 4.5 million to 3 million for completion of the project. The current bond is to remain in effect until a new bond is provided to the town planner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Now, the next is to reduce gravel under sidewalks from 15 to 18 inches, 15 to 8 inches. I'm going to tell you right now, it's a non-starter, it's not going to happen.
Can I ask why?
Because, Karen, would you like to tell them why?
I mean, it is required, that's part of our subdivision regulations, and so that's what, that's part of the subdivision regulations. That was what Stanton designed, I understand that a letter was given from Whitestone Associates and Stanton stating that some of the gravel fill that they have, the fill that they have used meets the, nearly the mass DOT specification, but we require this on all, on all subdivisions.
So the reason why Stanton, Katie correctly, won't put it on the floor plan is because it's your standard. And I, as a PE, and Katie as a PE, and Horstley-Witten also reviewed it, and GeoTech reviewed it, it's tremendous overkill, and these are private roadways also. So we're not talking about reducing the gravel along, you know, Haveli or Tilden, that would still be the 15 inches, but never mind that it's overkill and we have three letters, it's also, all the material that we brought in for the road, it's all granular, free, you know, free-flowing material, it's this ridiculous overkill in their private roads. Eight inches is still, if you read the original email from the GeoTech, it's kind of like, he said, he just kind of put in the eight inches, saying that basically, that's not even needed. So, I mean, this is, it's a waste of money, to be honest with you.
The project is built in fill, they brought in fill, gravel fill-
Yes.
-to build the roadway and sidewalk, so they've taken a representative sample and tested it, and we're, we'd essentially be removing the fill and bringing in the same fill, you know, because it is already compacted to, you know, they brought this up, the sidewalk and the roadway.
How would you be bringing in the same fill, it's gravel.
It is, that sample, that representative sample of sand and gravel fill that was brought in to create the, you know, the roadway up to a certain level, right now, the elevation, was brought in, and they tested that, and it generally met that DOT standard.
To have the exact same specification as the gravel? Not exact, no, it's not exact. All right. You knew all this coming in, right, so why are we talking about it now? If you'd wanted the change, you should have asked for the change then, I just, I don't, I don't see any compelling reason to change it. Compelling reason, again, is that it's- Compelling reason again is that it's, first of all, is they're private roads, I understand that it's previously approved plans, I understand that.
The private, the private roads and the people who live on them will be here when they start to fail, okay?
Well, what they had tested was, it said it meets that DOT general gravel burrow standard. So that's what they used to create the roadway and the sidewalk area. And rather than bringing out, you know, taking out that, was it 15 to eight, so that is seven inches, and then bringing back in seven inches of gravel.
Is this already built?
They've brought it up, because most of that site is in fill.
We already have it to grade, to the grade of basically ready for the, ready for the asphalt.
It's not like we're taking out loam, you know, in sub, you know, the topsoil. The roadway and gravel, and sidewalk area had to be brought up from the existing grade. It's all from above existing grade. So all this, this gravel fill was brought in to create the roadway and sidewalk. So what Whitestone had tested was that material they had brought in and compacted for that subbase. And rather than taking out seven inches and bringing back essentially the seven inches of the same material, plus eight more, why do that when it's already there? Let's just add another eight and bring, so that...
So, let me see if I understand this.
It's not the same material, it's different material.
They tested a representative sample and it met.
How many tested?
We have the gravel burrow, mass DOT spec, there's a percentage for each sieve, there's a percentage. I don't have the lab test results.
Yeah, I don't have representative samples all the way along where you want to change it?
I'm not quite sure how many, I don't have that information. But they brought in this material to create the roadway and sidewalk area.
Which was consistent, came from the same, came from the same location.
Yeah, I understand if you were to remove, you know, the topsoil and the subbase, because it's low being, it's not, but this is all already built up.
And you're putting this on top of it?
Yes, yeah, this is additional from what, where it is right now. So an additional, we're proposing an additional eight inches, and then the three and a half inches in two courses of the batumis concrete.
So, let me just get this straight. To put the 15 on top that we require, you would have to take seven off? Is that what you're trying to say?
We're actually taking the 15 out. Like, right now, it's basically, the grade for the sidewalks is basically at subgrade. So right now, if we were just going to meet the grading of the sidewalk, like, say we didn't put any additional gravel in, you just put the batumis down on what we did. So actually, instead of removing 15, we're talking about removing eight.
And bringing in eight inches of this mass DOT M3 dot 11, you know, dot 03 gravel burrow.
Which was what, which was what the specifications wanted, 15 inches of that?
Correct.
The gravel.
So, I don't understand that, so why did you put 15 extra on it?
It was your town's back, 15 inches, we put 15 as...
No, no, it was 15, the final spec is 15, so why did you go up 15 to have to take 15 down? Why didn't you stop 15 inches short?
Because we have the road done, and you'd be like, you'd drop off, like, you'd drop off in the road.
Okay, well, then you, you were going to face this anyway, so...
Well, they brought, right now, they brought it up to do build the road, and rather than dropping 15 inches up the side of the road, they, they brought it up and compacted it.
Yeah, but you were going to have to do that anyway.
They have to.
Doesn't matter what it was, right?
Right now, currently, I mean, existing grade was...
I mean, you would have done it the same way regardless, right? So this is nothing new, this is something that has always been in the plan, right? And what you're saying is, for some reason, you have the identical material. Is that what you're saying? Identical material?
They brought that in, but they tested it.
Virtually consistent, wasn't it, what I read?
Whitestone tested it and met the gravel burrow. Whitestone tested, they met a representative sample of what they had brought in in a test, and it met the DOT spec. So they had brought it in in the sidewalk area because it was so close to the roadway area. And rather than stripping 15 inches and bringing in another 15 inches, they're proposing, let's strip the top eight inches and bring in eight inches more, and then put the three and a half inches of batumis.
What's under the existing sidewalks out there right now?
Which sidewalk's going to go? Is this the material that they tested?
Well, the sidewalks down, the sidewalk already from Hathley up to the...
15, we met the...
And the sidewalk on Tilden, that goes from Tilden up by the...
The 15 inches, the sidewalk down 15 inches.
But all of that's not, that wasn't necessarily brought up from existing conditions, so you were probably removing, correct me if I'm wrong, you know, the, the subbase alone, the not suitable subbase material. The sidewalk area that he's talking about is in the development where it's all well above existing grades. It's already built up, it's well above existing grades.
As you come from, for example, a sidewalk that we put in from Hathley Road and Tilden Road, they're not as much of a fill area, right? So therefore, you don't have already 15 inches of this tested material, you might have had, you know, four inches. So then we dug down, got through the glacial till and so forth, and made sure there was the 15 inches. Reason why we didn't come earlier, to be honest, because again, didn't have the time, we had to get that sidewalk down before we lost the season, so. We only did the areas that we needed to do for these first homes, and now that's coming in now, we still have plenty of sidewalks to do that are in interior, more in the site where we actually, they have more fill area. So I make, you know what I'm saying? So it's kind of like, as you get closer to the external parts of the site, you're not in 15 inches of this fill, it could be like four inches.
So...
But these sidewalks still have places where you had more than 15 inches of fill.
Yeah, some, oh yeah.
We brought in...
Yeah, we did it already, so.
Some of these areas where the sidewalk, we have...
You already have well over, because you're so far up and you had a big...
Seven feet of great granular material underneath the sidewalk.
There's very little cut in the site, it's mostly all fill. So you already have a lot of good subbase that they've brought in and compacted. So those are the areas where we're looking to...
So let me see if I understand this, because I'm just, you know...
Do you have a map that shows us where you want to do this?
Seriously, let's say, just, no, wait a minute, Karen, wait a minute. Let's just say that this is what's already there, okay? And so you want to add eight inches above it? No?
No.
They want to cut eight inches down.
You want to come down eight inches?
You're going to take eight inches out and put, they were proposing, take eight inches out.
They should take 15 inches down, they only want to take eight inches down.
Oh.
Right? So...
I guess that's what you're saying.
Yes.
All right, well, what's your feeling about what...
Do you want me to get a map so he can show you where they want to do this? I really don't know where they want to do it.
I have no clue, I have no clue where they did these representative samples.
Karen, can I ask you this question? What is your feeling?
So I don't know anything about that kind of fill.
The big set, yes.
What is...
The like, mold-up set?
I don't know what's down there already, I don't know what... I don't know what's already there, and I don't, I think if we had Ben, it would be better, but he's not here today, but I don't underst...
So you...
I don't know how significant whatever they're talking about is to whatever we require that difference is.
All right, so...
So that's my problem.
Our consulting engineer reviewed it and noted that they concurred with the Whitestone assessment, that the material was very similar to the mass DOT spec.
Okay.
However, they noted that the plan, that the regulations require 15 inches. So they didn't, they didn't make a recommendation for, or against, because they're saying what, they're agreeing with Whitestone, that the material, yes, does, is very close, but...
This is, this is essentially a waiver request, right?
Right.
Is what this is, after the fact.
Right.
Right?
Now, we know that, we know that sidewalks are already here.
Correct.
We know that sidewalk is already constructed up to here.
Correct.
That's all of the sidewalk that I'm aware of.
So you're saying for all of these other sidewalks, you want this to apply?
Correct. In here, not, you know, we have to do sidewalk on Hathley Road, not that sidewalk, talking about this part of the site, correct? The remainder, you know, we have sidewalk on one side of the road, so the sidewalk could be here, sidewalk around this loop, and then, you know, sidewalk on one side here, and sidewalk for...
And where does they take these representative samples?
Uh, I don't have that information with me, I can provide that, but there was like two or three samples, that's it. But again, the material that they took the samples of is exactly, is coming from exactly the same yard where all our fill material came from. So it's representative, it's, it's not like it's coming from different places, it's all, so they'll...
So did this fill material, when you purchased it, was it certified to meet this standard we're talking about?
No, no.
And the material that you're going to put in?
But we have a GeoTech that has certified, has come back and certified that it, you know...
Well, he took two samples, right? Two samples, right?
I can go back, it was two or three, it wasn't like 20 samples, but again, it's representative, meaning, again, it came from the same, it's the same place, it's the same source. It's not like we took from different sources, it all came from the same pit, so it's same, it doesn't change.
I guess that doesn't really mean anything to me, right? If you have a specification you're supposed to meet, and you have to buy material to meet that specification, right? Not nearly meet it, but meet it, right?
But I would lean to, again, never mind, you know, the design engineers here, but also your own consulting engineer, you know, has a letter basically saying, again, supporting the letter from the GeoTech.
No, 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 he did not support it, he didn't make a determination either way. He, he said he said that Whitestone, what Whitestone is saying is true, but he's also saying, and I will read right from the, Horstley-Witten is in agreement with the sidewalk letter prepared by Whitestone that the proposed reduction in depth of the sidewalk gravel subbase from 15 inches to eight inches is permissible. However, Horstley-Witten notes that the Situate Planning Board approved the 15-inch gravel subbase depth that was specified by Stanton on the roadway and curb detail plan dated February 9th, 2018. That's what, that's their, that's their, that's their, that's Janet Bernardo, her conclusion, she's the one who reviewed the whole, the whole period view engineer, that's what she said. I don't know if it says exactly how many in the Whitestone report.
I don't believe it does.
I don't remember seeing anything to it.
And I don't think, but Whitestone does say that, it doesn't say nearly meets, it said generally meets.
Well, see, I have a problem with generally.
Yeah, that, that sounds like sometimes it does, sometimes it doesn't.
It doesn't. You know what?
That's because the DOT spec has a range, so like, for each sieve that the soil passes, there's a, there's a range.
You know what, we can run around in circles all over the place.
We don't have that data in front of us.
Right, you don't have the, go ahead.
What benefit is to us to make the change? Us being this half of us?
There is no benefit, the benefit is that, again, it's overkill. You're asking us, again, granted, it's already approved plans, I understand that, we're asking you to change the previously approved plans, but it's unnecessary.
We're not asking you agree to do it, right? So you said you were going to do it.
We're asking, we're requesting change from...
You're requesting a waiver.
Nothing compelling to it.
Correct.
I definitely wouldn't give a waiver to generally meets.
No.
Okay?
No.
No way, right? I would have to have something much more specific that would support that. And I would say, if you're really saying, I want to, I've already got it all laid down, and I want to go back and replace it with something, then I would say you're going to have to do some kind of sampling program in situ to say that it meets, you know, exactly what meets or exceeds what has, what we're talking about putting in.
If they sampled along the sidewalk length, so many feet into the sample?
Yeah, how many samples?
You know, how, so many feet, and make sure that it met that criteria.
You get a representative sample generally, you know, statistics say you've got to have about 30, right?
And by the time you spend the money to do the 30, you might as well do it.
I'd have to do the evaluation of the cost implications.
I mean, I'm just picking a number, you know, out of the air, right?
I don't know how you can put that number of 30, I mean, why not 20? I mean, I just want to kind of understand that representative sample.
Because you get a statistically relevant sample that you can do statistics around, and do standard deviations around, and all that kind of stuff, right? And, you know, maybe, maybe the, the engineering, soil engineering industry has a different standard, I don't even know what they are, right? So we're sort of flying blind here, and you haven't come and really presented much of anything here.
And...
Other than generally meets, and, and I just, I'm not prepared to do a waiver on that standard.
And, and, right, and Horstley-Witten notes that the approved set of plans requires 15 inches of gravel subbase. This is, which follows good engineering practice. So this is what Horstley-Witten is saying, and you want something different.
Where's it saying, I'm sorry, this is referring back to the approved plans, and stating that.
Horstley-Witten is referring back to the approved set of...
Approved plans, right.
They're not saying, they're sitting here saying in their letter that they're saying that you should hold to these approved plans, they're saying that they agree with, with the GeoTech.
They're referencing, yeah.
But they're not, they're not saying here, they're just referring back to approved, not saying that as a board, you should stay with the approved plans, they're not stating that.
I can't imagine the condition under which I would approve this waiver. I don't see where, the town doesn't gain anything, in fact, it loses because it's got a standard that's not being applied, and part of the plant, or part of the project, and not in all of it.
What we're, what we were trying to prove by the letters, you know, in the GeoTech reviewing, is that you're not losing anything. Yeah, you're not gaining anything, but you're not losing anything.
Well, that's on the basis of two samples, right? And I suspect those were lab samples as opposed to something that's done based on what they actually built out here and what you're going to take out.
They grabbed it from, they grabbed from the site, samples from the site. I don't have the information, I can grab it, but they grabbed it from the site and the sidewalk areas.
I think if you want this, you have to come back to us with something more definitive and proof of this is necessary, otherwise, I for one can't grant this.
Necess, sorry, necessary? What do you mean by necessary?
Well, I just don't even think it sort of meets the standard of what is, what is required, right?
Rebecca? I think, I just think that the wording in that letter doesn't let us, doesn't make us confident that what is the other seven inches is what lives up to the standard of what the Town of Situate asks you guys to do. We don't feel confident in that, right?
I don't.
What they're, what you're leaving behind, we just don't feel confident that they're apples to apples. So you either have to prove it's apples to apples, or we can't do it. Am I, are you guys...
If we have this, if you have the sieve analysis compared to the DOT spec.
Yep, I can provide that, but then you're asking for more samples, so I would, you know, to possibly determine if we're going to come back, I have to have a recognition of how many samples you require. Like I said, I think we have two or three, and I can provide the spec, we took the test sample, and provide, compare the two specs, they're the same. So questions, call me samples, you'd want to determine if it's worthwhile.
I don't know if whoever, our engineer that looked at it, would tell us what would be, could tell us what would be, what would be a better amount of samples to have, because I really don't...
Maybe like a number per linear foot of sidewalk.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't have the answer to that.
Whatever gets you to 30. I'm just saying, it, it seems like, you know, you also have the variability of how it was installed as well, right? Also faces us, right? So if you go and get a sample and it doesn't pass a test, then, you know, you picked the one location maybe that the installation wasn't the same, or the material wasn't 100% homogeneous, or didn't meet exactly the specification that we're talking here, so it just feels like we're trying to take, you know, a point and draw a line, right? And, and even two points, you know, could be anything in between, right? So I would just say that it seems like there needs to be, to make this change, particularly as Bill pointed out, there's no real value to the town in approving this change, and in fact, there's, there's arguably sort of precedent that we might be setting here that we don't want to set, right, for other developments. So I think it has to be approached with a lot more rigor than what we've got here.
And then to reiterate, that while Horstley-Witten's peer review engineer is in agreement with Whitestone, they however, they note however, that the approved set of plans is what you're supposed to be doing. Well, Whitestone might be, you know, it generally meets the gradation of gravel, we want it done the way it's supposed to be done. That's what we want. We want it done the way it's supposed to be done, how it is on the plan. If you can prove to us beyond a shadow of a doubt, but I don't know if you can.
Well, and, and, you know, you're talking to people who are not soils engineers here, right?
Right, we're not.
So we really need to understand what the differences are.
Right. Right.
I mean, standards weren't arbitrarily, just take three guesses and average.
No, yeah.
That's right.
There's an engineering foundation as to why that.
I would agree.
Yeah, well, consult back, just to note, your, your detail, right, that Stan Tech planning plans is well above and beyond most other municipalities for sidewalk design. Just so you realize that.
I under.
We're very proud of that.
Well above, well above, so it's already very conservative, just from an engineering standpoint.
Well, I, I don't even know that, you say that and I can take your word for it, but then we'd have to go back and ask our consultant, right?
You can pull ten engineers, civil engineers.
Everybody's different.
And by the way, it's the standard in the regulations, it's the standard.
No, I understand that, that's how I ended up on the plans, I understand it improves that.
You're asking for variance and that's what I'm saying, there would have to be a lot more, in my view, a lot more
Yes.
data and rigor to this request before we would consider it.
Some indication of what it's worth to make.
Right. And I just don't like to go with generally, it appears that it meets, no. I appreciate the fact that you've come in, but we, you know.
Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you need a motion to disapprove?
Um, well, I wrote the motion, I know what you were gonna say, so I put a pretty, wherever you dive if you want.
All right, I.
Do you want us to vote on this or do you want to withdraw and come back?
I'd suggest you withdraw it without prejudice.
It's up to you, it's fine.
Yeah, I'm not sure at this point, want to come back, but that, that means we're open.
We use the prerogative.
Why don't we do that?
I will entertain a motion to, for Toberl's to withdraw their reduced gravel without prejudice. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, the last thing we have here, signed planning board reports. I have to tell you, going before the advisory board last Thursday night, it's like having splinters put under like fingernails, those people.
Is this what the?
They're, what?
But what were you going in front of them for, the signs?
The sign by law, it was just awful. It went on for thirty minutes.
About what?
Well.
What, now what was the topic?
The topic was the sign by law and the topic was that, which we have approved, that Andrew Goodrich felt very strongly that he did not want a limit, a time limit on signs. And as I said to him, you can't do that because then it's not temporary.
Right.
It does not meet the definition of a temporary sign. Also, why does it say under temporary signs, they can't be illuminated? Well, if they were illuminated, they're not temporary. So, you know, it's, they went back and forth and it was.
Well, I don't know about that, right, I mean, you could put a little solar light next to it and be temporary, right? So, I mean, it could all be temporary that way, so I would say, okay. But it, it is hard to say something's temporary if it, if there's no end date in sight.
That's right, well, and then there was the discussion, well, if we took it down for twenty-four hours and then put it back up again. I said, you know, go for it, if that's what you want to do.
Yeah.
That's what you want to do, so that was more than interesting. So the only other thing we have here.
So did it, what did they, did they vote on this or something?
Yes, four approved and three did not and they are probably going to try and amend it on the floor of town meeting. And I say good luck.
Okay.
Okay, so that was that one. And then we have, we have to sign this.
The one that, you signed, the signed one last time, the one that you didn't sign last time was the, the section eight thirty, so we.
Section eight thirty was?
Bob Vogel's article.
Oh.
And so we were, you guys did not want to support that, so that's the most, that's the town report that, we have an original.
Oh, this is a report out that we did not support it, okay.
We do not want to support it the way it was written.
We had to back and make a report based on what you guys said that you wanted.
So we just need to vote on it now?
You need to, yeah.
Yeah, all right.
Yeah, so like, so just, we can just read that.
The planning board hereby reports that in accordance with Master General laws, chapter forty-eight, a public hearing was held on this article, which is amend the zoning by law for repair and restoration of non-conforming structures and uses. On February twenty-seventh, the board voted unanimously not to support the passage of the article at the April thirteenth, twenty nineteen annual meeting, annual town meeting. The article is too ambiguous and potentially opens up repair and restoration of non-conforming lots to an uncertain timeframe. The planning board does not support this article. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's that.
Okay.
All right, is there, you're on.
So, um, things are, I don't know what's gonna be happening with meetings and public meetings, but I, as soon as I hear something, I know there's some meetings tomorrow morning, I will obviously let you know. If they tell us we can't have public meetings, then we'll have to figure out something with town council. We are remaining very busy with next, next planning board meeting, I have Man Hill Road, there's a revised set of gardens on those, in the meeting after that, we have two justice pushing highway and Gilco County Way back again. We are still working diligently to try to get the stormwater regs back before, for the planning board, we've been working on it for two years, the working group. We have a couple hundred tweaks, then we're meeting once more with the working group, then it gets to the county planning board for a public hearing.
However, we, we will get this, this draft to have enough time to review it.
Well, then, I'm, as soon as we have the last working group meeting, I intend to get it to you guys and then, if we sometime review it, but just understand we've been working on it for two years.
It's a good thing.
I don't know what it says, but I guess I'm, I'm asking a question, would it make sense to have sort of an informal session to educate us on the process and what changes you've made, so.
Prior to the public hearing?
Probably, yeah, I, I'm just saying, it might help.
I'd attempt to do that next time, I mean, what we've done so far.
Should be fine, I think, yeah.
We've, what the, what the developers want is a default standard in there. So that for a single family home, if you do X, X, and X, you can get a stormwater permit with very little difficulty. And we're fine tuning, right now, part of that is gonna be based on a calculation of how many gallons need to be stored in chambers. So that basically you can take a sheet, I mean, anybody can almost do a sheet, do the calculation and you'll know that you need to install that many chambers for your roof runoff so that you don't, so that you're containing your runoff on your site. And that should make it easier for single family homes to quickly move through the process.
And is there somebody on the group who's like the stormwater science guy or something?
We, yeah, we have, we're having, we've been having a consultant, Josh Bowles from Merrill has been our consultant. John Chesh has been involved, Steve York.
So he's got a balance of different.
We have developers, we have engineers, we, we've had, you know, we've had a lot of people working on this. We're also changing that you don't record it, when you get the permit, you record the certificate completion. We're fixing a couple other inconsistencies. We're trying not to have to, we're trying to match it to the by law right now and not have to go back to town meeting at the time being to have the by law redone. And if you remember, the by law was done a few years ago too and that was a result of a working group as well. So, we're trying to keep it consistent, but to everybody's advantage. Because stormwater permits take in, in or in that amount of time. But we also know that based on.
It tends to be the most controversial of things.
Tends to be the most controversial thing and they tend to be the ones that sometimes single family homes are the ones who put the most pollutants out in the street because, you know, they're, nobody thinks they're watching and, you know, trucks, trucks go in and out, so you still get, you get a lot of siltation over the road, so, you know, we're not changing the basic requirements of fifteen thousand square feet of disturbance and increase in twenty-five percent impervious. That's still the same, it's some of the other minor, minor stuff in there, but if.
So it's getting the smaller end of the scale then?
Yeah.
Okay.
But as soon as we have, as soon as I get a working, you know, draft, absolutely give it to you. Next time might be too quick to have, but sometime soon, before we go to public hearing, I can, you know, we can talk about it.
Okay, that, that would be fine by me, I'd just like to, you know, know what drove us to whatever position you're in, you know, and understand the nuances behind it.
Right now, the by law does not agree with the regs, so there had to be a few tweaks. But it's, we're getting there.
Is there anything else?
No, that's good.
I'll entertain Bill's motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sharon, do you want me to sign these?
Yes, please.
It's all up.